Jirawi.
William Cattrall.
Mike Gardner.
Jamie Percy.
Carl Strohmeyer.
Anyone rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge.
Oh, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Carl.
I was wondering whether to wear it or not.
I. Uh, approval of agenda, we have one addition, um, the long mowing bids. Where would you like to put that before I read the rest of it?
I don't have a preference.
Well, let's put it as ten A.
There you go.
Okay, um, agenda, public comment, approval of minutes, warrants, correspondence, excess weight permits, second class and liquor license application, uh, long mowing bids will be ten A, possible meeting date change discussion, boards and commissions open positions, ballot article, policy discussion, panel historical society thirtieth anniversary celebration blessing, purchasing policy discussion, large equipment sealed bid procedure versus quote comparisons, select board areas of expertise discussion, public comment, executive personnel, executive personnel in adjourned.
I take the motion. Second it.
Uh, that motion is to approve the agenda?
That's correct, with the addition.
With the additions.
Thank you. I have a motion, I have a second, any more discussion on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open up for public comment and give me a minute, Hannah, so that's.
That's a tie.
Can you give her a minute?
Put it back. Is there any public comment, Hannah? No hands up for public comment? Okay, approval of minutes, minutes of February twenty second, two thousand twenty four.
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Staying.
Minutes of February twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Abstained. Minutes of March fourteenth, two thousand twenty four, select board meeting.
So moved.
Uh, I had one question on that one. Give me a second to get to it. Um, oh, it was Angie who hasn't sworn in, so she wouldn't have been a missing, absent, oh, wait a second, wrong one, but anyways, I saw her not as an absent selectman, is that just because she hadn't been sworn in yet?
You have to ask him, she's doesn't.
I think she wasn't absent.
She was absent the first time I was at.
Yeah, but it wasn't marked.
It was, it was, she just was noted that she was absent, but I just didn't know if it was sh-
She wasn't.
Because she wasn't sworn in, she technically wasn't a selectman, so she wouldn't have been absent, I'm, I'm overthinking it, that, that's all.
I had the same question, so you weren't overthinking it.
Okay, that's great.
I guess you could change it to not present.
I, I think that's a good point, I, I believe at that time, on the, on the meeting of the fourteenth, and we should look into that for the, so we can answer that question.
Yeah.
I believe that on the meeting of the fourteenth, we only had four select persons present.
Yeah, I was.
The board was only four members on the fourteenth, and there was four members present.
And it's four members present.
Does that make her vice chair valid, or do you need to redo that?
I, um, we can do that, just to be official, well, let's do it, be official.
Do you, if you're gonna.
Yeah.
Good morning.
If I say she.
Okay, I under- I understand that, but.
I, I, I didn't realize she wasn't sworn in on the fourteenth. I just thought she was still, um.
To be clear, you're sworn in now?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the board's pleasure, would you care, you reopen the restructure of that? In that position?
Should we just, on that position, let's just do it, reopen it, and then it's done with properly?
On that position, or?
On that one position.
Restructure the whole board?
No, we just need to re, we need to redo the one, because she wasn't here and wasn't sworn in.
Okay.
Do you want to bring that back, or are you adding it tonight?
We'll have to bring it back, actually, because we didn't, we don't have it worn, probably. To do it right, we'll have to bring it back.
Okay.
Something happens to me between now and the next meeting, you guys will have to reorganize and do stuff.
Okay, that's fine.
The minutes and board restructure for vice chair back.
Yep, yes.
So we'll build approved minutes of March fourteenth.
Correct, we'll table that.
Okay.
It's similar, motion. Don't move.
We can probably, yeah, we just won't act on it. Uh, warrants, counts payable March twenty second, thirty six thousand three hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty two cents.
So moved.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accounts payable March twenty ninth, thirty eight thousand one hundred sixty six dollars and seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll March twenty second, eleven thousand three hundred ninety three dollars and sixty four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that, comments?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll March twenty ninth, fourteen thousand three hundred fifty three dollars and seventy one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments on that?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Which brings us to correspondence, and before we read any of the correspondence, um, I'd like to talk about that for a couple of minutes, um, because I think that we're going to, Hannah's going to start including a packet in the, um, on our website, um, that anyone can read probably on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Hannah, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's been some question and correspondence this week, and my feeling is, on the correspondence, if someone sends a correspondence into the select board for us, and they ask for it to be read at a meeting, a regular meeting, the name of that person or group is going to be, um, read at that meeting. So I don't see why we wouldn't include their name on the agenda. But on correspondence that comes in from a group or a resident that is just for the select board to read, that they don't ask to be read in a, in a regular meeting, I don't think that correspondence should be part of the packet, because I don't think the packet becomes public knowledge, and I don't think that the, the, the person or group is not asking for that correspondence to be public knowledge, they're just asking for the select board or someone or whatever to be aware of something out there, right, or they could be asking for information. It would however be, um, it would however be available in a FOIA request, if there were a FOIA request, or because it becomes public knowledge. I don't know what the board's feeling is on that, but that's my feeling on, on correspondence moving forward, and I, I'd like to make it a motion and make it our policy, do it that way.
Do you want to include a, a deadline for correspondence?
I was just gonna say that, for somebody that has a question that we don't get at the night of.
I was getting to that, but we, we can do that, well, let's do it on one shot. I would, I would like correspondence, any correspondence that someone asks to be read at the select board meeting or be put onto an agenda, um, I know that we're asked as board members, um, and we don't always, we're, aren't always able to adhere to it, but I know that Tara has asked us to have any agenda items to her by Friday close of business.
Yep.
So I would, I would ask that correspondence be here by Friday close of business to be read at the following Thursday meeting, or regular board meeting, whether Thursday or a different night.
You made the motion, Mike?
I didn't make a motion, Carl, I just made my, that was, that's my feeling.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Any more discussion by the board, any comments? You guys have any feelings on that, other than what I said?
I agree one hundred percent.
I, yeah, I mean, yeah.
If, if somebody wants it read, then you, the rest of ours still public knowledge anyways, and it's, obviously, if we read it, it's gonna be a recorded thing, so it's.
And anytime anybody, you know, asks a question, they're supposed to.
Do we?
Name and their address.
How do we handle anonymous? Um, we're in discussion right now, right?
Yep.
Well, how do we handle anonymous, uh, letters that are sent from anonymous?
My, my feeling on an anonymous letter is, it's not, it's, it's nothing. If, if someone doesn't attach a name to it, then, and, and as a board, we can decide what we're gonna do with that too, but as far as I'm concerned, an anonymous letter is not, is not even worth reading or putting in the packet or anything, it's just, attach your name to it, and, and it becomes a valid concern point or whatever.
Okay.
So, my feeling, anonymous is something the board should be reading, and we can take and choose to act upon it and.
Mm-hmm, but as far as putting it into the packet or whatever, I, that's right. Or even to the board, you can send it to the board, that's, I know what I'm gonna do with an anonymous letter.
Mm-hmm.
Any more discussion?
Any questions?
Comments? Bill?
Not that, now, I feel gotta have your name on it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, correspondence?
So I took the first half, I think.
Oh, okay.
The first one is from John Bushee, he's on the planning commission. Honorable select board members, during the panel planning commission meeting held on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty four, the planning commission added an agenda item to discuss the matters of confusion regarding the alternate commission member appointments, and knowing that an individual citizen has inter, expressed interest in joining the commission. After discussion, an unanimous vote of all members present at panel planning commission respectfully requests that the select board restore the planning commission roster to nine regular members, and appoint the interested citizen, Robert Jarvis, to the planning commission. By restoring the commission to nine members, we feel that the extra minds and voices being added would us be an asset to the town as a whole, and would best fit the busy personal life schedules of all members. Respectfully submitted, John Bushee, Chairperson, panel planning commission. Just a little bit of background, um, on March twenty fourth of twenty two, the board voted to decrease the members from nine to seven due to them not having a forum on a consistent basis.
Can I ask a question, Tara? Who was chairman of the planning board at that time?
I believe it was, it was either John or Fred. It was John, but I'm not positive.
Okay, just curious, that was.
In, in twenty two?
Hannah said it was John.
Okay.
And there is, I don't know if there's two interested parties or one, but there's one that we definitely know of, which only gives you, if you were to increase to nine, you only have eight.
But the discussion we're having right now is, um, increasing.
Increase or?
Increasing the size, because that's the discussion that, that's what they're asking for.
I, um.
Take it under Ryan Mitten. Question and answer recorded.
So do you want to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, next regular meeting? Is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I do know that the, the statute is not, which, which has been in error, I, I believe for a while, that.
Right.
Planning commission does not have permanent members on the board.
Right.
So it's been done wrong in the past, which, so let's correct it, but I also don't want to keep someone off the planning commission. Well, we'll discuss that.
We'll discuss that at the next meeting.
Yep, okay. All right. Next one, or you have the next one, do you?
I do. So this is from Alan Strohmeyer, our delinquent tax collector. Dear selectmen, I am holding a tax sale on April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four, for eight parcels. I believe that has been decreased to six, actually, somebody paid, so six parcels. Um, she's requesting that a board member be present for the sale, to represent the town, which she always does, so.
April twenty fifth?
Yep.
I can be here for sure.
Twenty fifth at ten AM.
If, does, you know, we can have more than one for sure, but I'll be here.
Okay. And the last piece of correspondence is from Kelly Fishburne, she's from the BRC. Hi, Tara, I wanted to share some information about the energy capacity building mini grant available through the MERP program, and encourage panel to apply. As you know, the municipal energy resilience program, the MERP, is a state program, three distinct components designed to help municipalities improve their energy efficiency and resiliency. The energy capacity building mini grants is one of part of the program. This is a non-competitive grant and can provide municipalities with up to four thousand, four thousand dollars, which they can use for outreach and education related to energy efficiency and resiliency. The application is non-competitive and very easy to complete, takes less than ten minutes. Um, I think panel could benefit from the four thousand dollar mini grant. Use of the mini grant does not have to be connected to the energy assessment of the Old Town Hall. The grant funds can be used more generally for outreach and education, things like hosting a community energy forum, or sending a town log mailing. Um, applications are being accepted and approved on a rolling basis, but they'll close on May thirty first. So this is, read it as part of correspondence, but not sure if you want me to bring it back. Do you decide if I should apply for the grant, or if you want to give me the go ahead to apply for? Non-competitive, four thousand.
Is there a deadline on it?
May thirty first.
So we could bring it back next regular board meeting, stay consistent. Please do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, other correspondence, um, Hannah, is Jenny in? Okay. She wasn't fair, she can be in or not, so I'll read it. From Jenny DuR. The other thing I want to raise is that there is a process for placing people on the various commissions and boards, and it is not just w- write a letter saying you want to continue, and the board willingly voting to have said person go for another term. You're supposed to put out a call for people to volunteer, you then go through all the submissions and make your decisions, it is not about who submitted their interest first. It is not about just putting worn bodies in seats. You go through each list of members, figure out whose terms are up, notify them, and put out a call for volunteers. You also know ahead of time if they're al- alternates on a given committee. If I wrote right now that I wanted to be on every committee, would you just have a random vote about me at a meeting? No, that's not how it works. Please read this from the correspondence, the next meeting, thank you, Jenny. She wanted to add to that. I find it ridiculous that the agenda broke down every letter and its topic when you do not even have to read correspondence out loud. This is not about me, although I do want to see my name on an agenda unless I ever, I do not want to see my name on an agenda. Sorry. Unless I have requested and been approved for an agenda item, removing my name was not the point. The point is that the board should be receiving the packet well ahead of the meetings with everything, so they can read it ahead of time, including all the correspondence, no time to read the packet, then get off the board. That's what you signed up for, being informed so you can make informed decisions at the meetings. The package should be made available to the public as well, all the details can be there, the agenda should be concise. I also want to say that with regard to requiring signatures for ballot articles every year, compare what other towns do. Bennington does not require signatures aside from new requests or increased requests. Shasberry, I think it's Shasberry, just changed this policy the other way around. It is a waste of everyone's time to require signatures every year, just make them follow the process of getting their info in on time. Okay, and the rest of it's just, that's, that's it for Jenny, the rest of it was just a redundant email. Uh. Uh, from Pauline Gutlaw, to the panel select board, reference panel firemen. My understanding is town organizations must submit a petition signed by a hundred and fifty registered panel voters in order to solicit town funding for a ballot article. My concern, the time required by each of panel's volunteer fire departments to pursue this endeavor. Excuse me, given panel's firemen most, must routinely train, attend meetings, and go on calls whenever required, I suggest the mandatory signature regulation to request funding for these organizations be waived. Perhaps one way to avoid this effort is pay the volunteers a dollar stipend per year, thus, they are considered paid employees. If there are approximately fifty volunteers, that's fifty dollars per year, thus preserving our firemen valuable time for lifesaving causes. Sincerely, Pauline Gutlaw. And I think the last one is from Jim Kosis. Are you going to publish the names of all letters to the selectmen on the agenda each meeting? That being the case, I hope you will include this letter as correspondence at the next meeting. Perhaps people have a right to send in letters to the board, but do not expect the names to be published on the agenda. Are you trying to deter people from communicating with the board? Also, when was this discussed and approved by the board? I understand when a letter is read during the meeting, the person should be identified, but having it put in the agenda is not necessary. This is not the way to reconnect to the townspeople, Jim Kosis. That's it. Excess weight permits. Amerigaz. It is, uh.
Wait, wait.
Yes, I was looking for X at the top, yep, sorry, the Wingland Quality Service Incorporated, which is a fleet permit. Uh, fleet permit for camp, pre-cast kind creek products. A fleet permit for Basin Brothers. A fleet permit for Gurney Brothers Construction. That's it.
I make a motion, we accept the full weight permit, do we make a motion on that? No, yes.
Hmm, yes.
Make a motion that we accept them.
A second. Uh, any discussion, questions, comments? Joel has approved everyone. Just, I need to announce that. Uh, having no questions or comments, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, second class liquor license application.
We have a tobacco license for panel market and deli.
Was that tobacco license?
There's, there's two.
Okay.
Second lap is, sorry, second class license and tobacco license, I guess I listed it wrong on the agenda, but.
Okay.
They fall under the same.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is for tobacco.
It was tobacco, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the second class licensing for panel market.
For panel market and deli.
Yes, that's for liquor. So moved, I believe it's.
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, so the possible me, oh, you're doing only dead first.
Yeah, long mowing bids, I didn't open with any more licenses.
Okay, just those two.
Okay. Long mowing bids.
So we only received two and have not been opened yet, going to do the honors? I might do that one. So one is from gardeners lawn care, and one is from J and L lawn. Or J and L landscaping, sorry. So. This is unbroken, we don't fight here. I think this one is broken down.
This one is broken down, everything, and then the final total is on the bottom last page.
Okay, so I'll just summarize what this one says, town panel mowing, returning a peak bid for twenty twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six, spring cleanup, um, which includes our cemeteries, the ball fields, the tannery site, and the town office is twelve hundred, quoted at twelve hundred, pump stations and fire ponds to seven fifty, all planting two fifty, fire pond, four times a year, sixty each, all weekly mowing, approximately twenty nine weeks, is twelve fifty a week. So estimated monthly, it's about five thousand, according to this, estimated yearly is thirty six thousand two fifty.
Next forward.
That is for J and L landscaping.
Okay.
So this one is from gardeners, and they broke it down by year, so for the twenty twenty four, so it's definitely broken down different. So like annual cost for each pump station is seven hundred, annual cost for mowing the tannery, twenty one hundred, Orchard Street Cemetery, uh, one thousand one hundred and twenty, same for the Carpenter Hill, and gardener says, um, one thousand eight hundred and twenty, that cemetery, Jackson Cross Road is three thousand three hundred and sixty, cemetery, the racetracks, one thousand one, one hundred and twenty. Um, but North Town, a little leak field is twenty one hundred, that includes the pump station that's there. The cemetery on Indian Massacre Road for the year is forty two hundred. Ooh, Oak Hill Cemetery mowing, eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty. That's it, four hundred and twenty dollars each time. Um, spring cleanup, thousands, spring cleanup pump station, nine fifty, plant, planting flowers, two fifty, so that's the matching. So for an annual cost, we have forty three thousand eight hundred and twenty for, um, twenty twenty four year. Annual cost of forty five, five forty three thirty for the twenty five year, and annual cost for forty seven, three thirty four ninety five for the twenty six year. So it looks like gardeners lawn care included their increase because it is a three year contract, um, I don't.
I believe that's the difference on the first year.
So the difference is five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars on the difference per year for the first year.
When, when we put that out, and I don't remember, how did we ask those to be returned?
Yeah, where do I have that?
One just here is. Kind of confusing.
So. So the bid does ask for a specific detail breakdown. It looks like J and L landscaping sort of lumped theirs together, like they lumped all the pump stations together. Um, because it says primary work sites and location specific detail. So it, it does lay it all out, but it doesn't say, it says provide a price per week for mowing and trimming the sites above. So it does, it's, it does meet what was asked for, just not in a specific. Um, wh- what we can do is if it's, you don't feel comfortable making a decision now, I can sort of dissect it a little more and bring it back. This board want to do.
It should ask for three years though in the bid, correct?
Um, yes, thus, I assume, because it says for all three years, that they're not including an increase.
They don't have an increase listed.
Nope.
Oh, that. You know. That was my.
That's me, here I am in, Paul, yeah. It's a little confusing.
Do we have to act on them tonight?
No, we have time, mowing starts April fifteenth though, so we could do a special next week, just for mowing bids.
Yeah, in fairness, in fairness to the two. Well, in fairness to the two bidders, they can, they just, you know, give them some time to phone, you know, how, however it takes out.
It goes for.
Yes, it's, and they both have insurance included.
Same, same, same amount of insurance.
Well, follows the music right here, though.
Yeah, that's the same.
Okay.
Well, if we're gonna have a special meeting on it, then, um, we can go over all that stuff, that, that special meeting, then. It just. It's just.
Because when we put it out, remember I specifically said, are you sure you want to open them in the meeting? Cause we could have opened them earlier, had time to review and then made this decision tonight, but I, I think you should. Come and review them.
Yes.
Before making a decision.
Uh, what's your pleasure in the meeting? What's the meeting scheduled next week?
Hannah, do you have any meetings next week?
Yeah, one on the sixth, this is D R B, the sixth.
No, Thursday.
Yeah, we could even do Tuesday.
What's your pleasure next week?
I don't have a like, so I'm open all the time.
Welcome to my world.
I have a previous engagement next Thursday, but that doesn't. Um, stop you guys from having a meeting. Or, you know, I'm open. Wednesday. If they wanted to do a special meeting on the third. If you wanted me there, I mean, I'm just, I have, I have an engagement on, on the fourth, that's all.
I got a meeting on Wednesday, so.
Do a short one.
The rest of the board.
For the Tuesday.
For the rest of.
We can do a short meeting on Tuesday night.
That's fine, buddy.
Tuesday, how about Tuesday for you? Any day of the week works for me.
Stay at five thirty? Can anybody make a Tuesday meeting at five thirty?
Yeah.
For, just for the long mowing bids?
Yeah.
Okay, let me give this all the time and review. Okay. Tuesday night, five thirty, please. Special select board for long mowing bids. Now, I think it's better for the bidders, see who they can adjust.
We can look at that.
Well, we get a chance to look at it, but the, the sooner we can get. Make a decision, the, the better for them. Oh, I agree, yes. Um, possible meeting date change discussion?
So I thought that Hannah and I would both be gone to Montpelier, but it turns out it's just me, so you can have a meeting without me, and I don't think we need to change anything schedule. Hannah said she's comfortable running the meeting, so.
Okay.
I just won't be here.
Okay, so that's, we're good with that one?
Yep.
Beautiful. Boards and permissions open positions.
So, um, obviously if the board decides to increase planning commission, um, this will change, but currently there is one, uh, position open on conservation commission, and on the DRB, there is one regular position and one alternate.
Because by statute, the DRB does have alternates?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I believe that's from that. That's where the mistake happened for the planning, is because we went from the way the DRB was set up.
It could be, that was a while ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, quite a long time ago. Okay, that's the only openings?
Uh, yeah, and you asked me to bring it back, so.
We're bringing that back.
You asked me to announce what the open positions.
Okay, correct.
Let's set a deadline, uh, for interested parties. Come back to us, um, by the next regular board meeting. For the conservation commission. And the, uh.
DRB.
DRB. Thanks, Jamie. But drawn a blank. Ballot or policy discussion? I asked to put this back on. Um. Pretty much right after the last meeting.
If I had known they were coming, I would have put it a little higher up the agenda.
Yeah, sorry. We had no idea that, you know, but that's okay. I'm sorry about that. I'm trying to move along here. Um. In light of um, a lot of public comment. My recommendation is the board chairs to do away with the asking for the signatures.
Put that in the motion.
For, for ballot articles. Well, we, we made a motion to do it, so we have.
Yeah, we gotta do it.
So we have to make.
Oh, we do have to make the motion.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we um. Go back to the way it was, I guess is the way I, the way to word it. Back to what we were, what we had before.
Resign.
Resign the motion.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any more discussion on that? From anybody? Jamie?
So that means.
Jamie, Jamie Elwell, sorry, I just want people to know we are Jamie Elwell, Pono Fire Department.
Yeah, um, so that means we're going to go back to, if we want to put a separate ballot article, or if we want to increase our budget, we need to get the hundred and fifty.
Correct.
For the same thing that we've, we've done before.
That's right, so, so in, in, in March of twenty twenty-five, if you were to keep your ballot articles, and I, I don't remember what they were, but if you were keeping them the same as they were in March of twenty twenty-four, you're fine. They would stay as written and no signatures would be required. If you were to increase your budgets or your ballot articles, then you would have to get the signatures or add, and I don't, I just don't want to, I, I know, I know you understand, I just want everyone else to understand out there too. Uh, an increase in, in a ballot article, or a new ballot article, or anything would require the signatures be placed on the ballot. Okay? That answer your question?
Yeah.
And I, I wanted to be clear, I wanted to be clear to everybody watching too, what, what, what is your, what have we done back?
Oh, and you'll get another letter and an email.
This one will be much more pleasant though. Any more discussion? You guys have anything out there?
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion on the floor and a second. All of them fair?
Aye.
All right, so that's taken care of. Um, Powder Historical Society thirtieth anniversary celebration blessing.
So I called it a thirtieth anniversary celebration, but Joyce would like me to correct that, and it's an annual members meeting and an open house. So on Sunday, the twenty-eighth, uh, the PHS Powder Historical Society, they'll have their annual members meeting at one, followed by an open house, and they're hoping that, um, public will join them.
Is that April twenty eighth?
April, yeah, did I, what did I say?
You just said the twenty eighth.
Sorry.
I, I just wanted me to really have the right date, that's.
April twenty eighth, one month.
Yep, okay.
Um, so they just want your blessing to use the parking lot. If a lot of people come, they'd like to set up tents and stuff in the back parking lot. Um, they just wanted to get that approved by you all before going ahead.
Large gathering permit for.
Yeah.
No, because it's, our gathering is two hundred and fifty.
Okay, I just.
I would hope they would have that, that problem.
Yeah.
It'd be nice.
All right, and I think it would, Bob's.
That's right. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve their request.
Second.
Any more discussion? Like Carl said, I hope they have that problem. We're having to worry about it. Somebody complaining about not having a large gathering.
Yeah, hey.
I have a motion in a, in a second. Any, any more discussion on it? All of them fair?
And their open house will include tours of the history center, so.
Nice, luck. I'm told for great weather. Uh, purchasing policy discussion, large equipment sealed bid procedure versus quote.
Um, so last, I think it was the last regular meeting, Joel came to you all and asked to go out to bid on a truck. Um, he's finding that very difficult. Looking at the policy, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do it that way. Um, when you're going out to bid for services, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, but when it's a large piece of equipment, getting uh, places to put a bid out is really hard, and then getting them to stick to it with the time that's in between and all that is, it just complicates things. So, um, Joel is hoping that you will allow him to go out for quotes on a, on a new vehicle, the truck that he asked to purchase.
And those are quotes that he'll be back, bring back to us.
Will bring back, yeah, he won't.
So basically, so basically, we're still gonna be the ones making the decision. It's just he's not gonna stretch this out for, it won't get stretched out for three to six months.
Exactly.
And then lose the, and then lose it because.
And when you ask for bids, I mean, you're kind of, you could, you could put something out and wait for a bid. You could wait a month and then you get nothing.
Yeah.
Most bids are only good for thirty days.
Right. So if you go for quotes, he can get three to fives competitive quotes for.
And you're gonna get more people that will give you a quote versus enter into the bidding process.
Are the quotes usually less for like thirty days or ninety days? Um, or are they just for one type?
Probably. Yeah, there's probably a limit on that too.
Uh, I'm gonna ask Justin O'Leansky, um. Justin, a quote timeframe that Angie just asked, can you help us out a little bit on that? The last thirty days normally, or is it however you put it out there? Okay.
Thanks.
You know, Justin loves that, so we need to come now.
But I think we could change it in the, I mean, we could certainly make that, um, change to the policy. Cause there are exceptions in our policy, in our purchasing policy, which will also be available for people to see in the packet. Um, so there's an exception for wastewater to make minor and major purchases, but there isn't one for highway.
When you leave that language.
That's exactly what I'm reading right now. I thought, I was looking for that. I thought that was.
You want the motion?
I think it should be a couple, two parts here, actually.
Yeah.
Right? I think one of them should be that. I would be gonna, it'll be a change in the policy. Right? That we currently have. Is it gonna be like a dollar amount limit, or is it just gonna be vehicles? Um, is there certain things that are gonna be still bidded out?
But it still will come back to us. So in the end, it's, the only difference is, is that the process still ends up the same. We're the ones that make the decision. The only difference is, is that how you come across, come up with that.
No, but we would still have, the crushing would be bid instead.
Correct, because that's service.
So it's, it's basically just the.
Like, I would put it, I would probably put it as like a large equipment purchase over certain, cause it's, yeah, it is all within certain prices. So, yeah, I would probably word it as like a large equipment purchase.
So.
Certain amount.
In here, in here, Bill, just to answer, in this policy that we have now, current ones. For all major purchases with a value between three thousand and twenty thousand, price and rate quotations shall be obtained from at least three qualified vendors via a request to bid. Ensure that the town has received a fair and reasonable price. Vendors will be selected based on cost, quality of goods and services offered, ability, capacity and skill of the vendor demonstrated under prior contracts with the town. And I think this should go with everything that we do, not just waste, you know, wastewater and road. Local bids are bids from companies considered to be within twenty miles from the town calculator from any border and may receive consideration as a local bidder. If the bid meets all qualifications here to force that as a qualifying bid is no more than two point five percent higher than all other qualified competitive bids. Large purchases with a value of twenty thousand and one dollars and higher, which is the large purchase or simplified acquisition threshold under federal regulations or more must follow a sealed bid process as outlined below. And that's our policy.
It could just speak on vehicles, cause most of your large equipment, we still can do bids. I mean, those companies still do. Usually follow through with bids.
Is Joel looking to do it for a specific reason at this point?
He's asking.
So. Because he wants to do that for the truck. Why don't we have him do it for the truck contra, for the truck purchase? And we can see how it goes. Give him the authority to do it for that. Cause he's still gonna come back to us.
See if that's the difference.
See if it makes it.
I know, I, I haven't talked to him on this particular one. He approached you on this one. I know on the last truck that we bought, um, the truck, the truck that he's driving, one. I had one, that's right, we had one bid.
Right.
So it wasn't, obviously wasn't very competitive.
Yeah.
And then, and then that bidder reneged on the bid anyways, so if we do the request for quotes, I think we're gonna get a better. Um, I think, yeah, I think it's gonna give us more options. I mean, we, we had one bid last.
Yeah.
Because, um, Joel explained it to me on that particular truck. Um, that people are reluctant to bid because the market's all over the place and it takes so long to get stuff from whatever, so.
Well, they, they could, they're gonna sell the truck quicker if they give somebody a quote and they're gonna buy it or not. Rather than wait for us to make, I make a, a month, wait a month for, for the purchase.
Yeah, that's true.
I think we could probably do that, Carl. I think we could probably do, uh, make a motion, do request for quotes on this one and see how it goes, and if it works good, then we can change our policy.
We can change our policy.
Rather than having to change it now and if it didn't work.
Right, and that gives him, that's gonna give him a week or two lead time, more than what he would have had if he had to wait, cause we're, we weren't gonna change the policy tonight anyways.
Right.
That's a good idea. What's your pleasure?
Since I will make a motion that we allow Joel to get quote, to get quotes. Um, the upcoming truck purchase.
Should we have a minimum of three?
What's that?
Should we have a minimum of three quotes?
Yes.
Yes, a minimal.
Good point.
Minimum of three quotes.
I'll second that.
So the motion on the floor to allow Joel to get a minimum of three quotes on, uh, this truck purchase. And I have a second. Is that the correct motion?
Yes.
And I have a second. Any more discussion? All of them fair?
Aye.
Select board areas of expertise discussion. All you guys are gonna be so.
In that final.
Hey, Tara.
I didn't too.
I'll, I'll take Bob's. What Bob had down, I'll take his. It'll make it easy.
I'd stay the same, unless there was. Issue.
All right, I'm gonna open it.
I said I stayed the same and.
I, I have, I have it open if you want me to read it.
I have it open. That's totally up to you. I have it open too. I'm just gonna change the ones that need to be changed as you go along.
So I'll, I'll be known through each one?
Sure, so RFPs.
RFPs, it'll be Carl. Grant app, I'm not gonna read each one, unless someone wants me to.
Oh.
Grant applications and closeouts is Angie, good? Um, daily office management is Angie. Highway is Mike and Jamie. Good?
Yep.
Wastewater is Mike and Jamie. Uh, website, social media was Bob.
I'll take it.
Parks and Rec is Brian. You're, you're involved with him. Will be William. Uh, DRB is me. I'll stay there. Planning Commission is, was, sorry, was Brian. Anybody want that one?
I can do it.
You need a planning commission? Perfect. Uh, policies was Bob.
Okay.
Ordinances was Bob and Mike.
Okay. If you're good with it, if you're good to have me on board, I'll have it.
I, look, and I'm not gonna tell anybody they can't do it. Connection with Town Clerk's Office is Angie. Town Hall maintenance is Jamie. IT is, was Bob.
Yep, I'll take that.
Okay. Health officer was Brian. Want to take that one?
Sure.
Okay. Zoning is Jamie. Animal control was Brian and Jamie.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. Uh, lister assessor, Jamie, still good?
Yep.
Uh, liaison to the Powder Historical Society was Brian, and you're, you fall, kind of fall right into that one.
Yep. Yeah.
Perfect. Transport station is Jamie.
Yep.
The press is Mike. Trainings is Angie.
Yep.
And town reporter is Angie and Mike.
We have to add.
I put, I had two that I was. Conservation Commission and Constable.
And cemeteries.
Cemeteries. Oh, I'm just gonna, is it cemetery, is that gonna be its own commission now? Thinking about.
It's, it's the, it's you guys.
Yeah.
It's, it's you guys.
Okay, so the cemetery commission is everybody here anyway, right? Okay. So the conservation commission could be just one or two board members?
I'm, I don't know if you guys want me to grab that.
If you're comfortable with it.
Cause you're on it, right?
I'm.
And where you can just.
And what was the other one we had?
Constable.
Constable, good point. Um. Anybody want that one?
I can help with that one.
Anybody else? And I, and I don't wanna exclude anybody if they wanna work on something with somebody else, and, which goes exactly the same for anything that I'm on. At, where I was by myself or Angie or anybody, if somebody wants to be on that particular, um, area, please jump in. But we need somebody for the constable.
Yeah.
Jamie? Jamie?
You wanna do two people on the castle?
I think we should. On cemeteries, even though it's.
What's that?
Can we put someone on cemeteries?
I'll take cemetery.
Yeah, I can do it, we both can do it.
Both do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do the castle with Jamie.
And who had animal control? I worked with him as well, so I know a lot, so. You need help, let me know.
Yep, okay, you have some, Bill, Jamie are on the animal control. All right.
Perfect.
Nice.
That wasn't so bad.
All right, now, bear with me for a minute, I give it. Any public comment here? No hands?
There is a hand up, you just, um, it's, it says Steve and Donna, then you just let them know it's okay.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you let them in, um, public comment of Steve and Donna. You can unmute yourself.
I'm, I'm wondering if their audio is not working because they're on muted, but it's not happening, so.
She can type in, can she?
Yes, you can do the chat.
Are they typing now?
I don't see any buddy typing.
Donna or Steve, we.
Oh, yes.
Just a reminder of the Easter egg. Whoa, it faded away.
It's Easter egg on, on down to Legion.
Yes, there's just a reminder of the Easter egg hunt for the Paddle American Legion.
There you go, thank you.
Saturday, but I don't remember the time, oh, at noon.
So there's the Easter egg hunt at the American Legion. Um, is there an age? Well, limited on that, Donna, uh, it's Saturday, March thirtieth at twelve o'clock at the Legion. Hang on, we'll see if she types us in the, uh, age. Sorry, Donna, I'm not sure where the glitch is. We'll get through it.
I believe it's up until twelve, but I'm not positive.
I know they split the, they do split the kids, I think, two different groups too.
Welcome everyone, you can all come Easter bunny.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I guess there's no age, everyone in the Easter bunny will be there.
You're gonna be in your Easter bunny outfit, Mike?
No. I do that well. Any other public comment, Hannah? I hope we got everything from you, Donna, I, I'm, we apologize again for. The glitch, I don't know where it is, but hopefully we got everything you wanted to get on public comment and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. No other hands? And no other public comment, you guys have anything, we sat through the whole meeting.
Wow.
All right, I will entertain a motion for an executive for personnel. For possible disciplinary action. Town employee personnel. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Recording stopped.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to command personnel uh, for possible disciplinary action.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, there's no disciplinary action at this time. Further discussions. I will entertain a motion to enter executive for personnel for contractual.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor? I'll entertain a motion to command of executive.
So moved.
The motion in a second, any discussion? All over there? Um, we have two agreements by independently elected officers to be bound by the personnel policy that have been signed. Um, by the officers and signed by the select fourth. And that's it. Uh, if there's nothing to come, nothing else to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
The motion in a second, any discussion? All was in favor? Have a great night, everyone, thank you.